Five, four, three, two, one. It's time for the I O U. Let's go.
Hey guys, welcome back to the C N J show and I have my favorite Jenny Juice and I have my sister Nick here. And we're gonna let you guys hear this little clip from the school teacher. I guess he was in a board meeting and here's what he had to say.
And some individuals prefer they as a pronoun. Like meat or bot, they are my best friend.
We got kids that can't read and write and then we're gonna teach them incorrect grammar. I mean it's ridiculous, okay? Who gave permission to talk about this? We could, there's two genders. If you're born with a penis and you have testicles, that's just anatomy. You're a male. If you have a vagina and ovaries, you're a female. A man cannot menstruate. A man cannot lactate and breastfeed a child. You cannot give birth if you're a man. If you wanna be an adult and do whatever you want with your life, I'm okay with that. Don't push this ideology on children. I'm not gonna work in a district that's okay with that. You need to make a clear statement on how many genders are there because parents are, they're already pulling their kids out of public school. They're doing homeschool options, they're going online. It's gonna increase as this liberal ideology comes into our schools. This isn't a political indoctrination camp, okay? It's public education. We wanna teach edu-
Don't know your friends Jen.
Okay, so guys, with this, I seen some of the comments. Some people had very positive things to say and some people did not. Now, what we're gonna do also, uh, we'll send the link in the description box. If you guys want to actually go and check that video out, that little short clip and actually see his face. Um, he did get fired. Um, I would love to have a, a, um, petition so that, hey, we could sign off this, so that he won't get fired. Because, um, I think what has happened is this. The Me Too and all these different things is getting, uh, so weak minded. And honestly, I'm just being honest. I don't care what your, your gender is or what you want to do, but can we keep it how it used to be? When it comes down to kids, you supposed to know what, you know? Let's keep it to kid stuff, okay? Now, once they get older, that's when they should go and explore the world like, hey, guess what? I wanna be, I wanna be straight, I wanna be bi, I wanna be whatever, but guess what? That choice is on you. So Jen, what do you feel about that?
I personally feel like when he said the part about the school becoming, you know, more about politics. You know, forgive me, those weren't his exact words, but that's how I feel about the, the whole situation. I do feel like that. Um, I think a lot of people may look at it as wrong, oh, you know, because of the liberal sway that is, that has come about. I think people do feel like, okay, well, we do need to teach the children this or that and, you know, things like that. But I think it's becoming too political. I think it's the same thing where, you know, back in the day where I think it was an atheist lady that petitioned to have prayer out of school. I think it is, we're kinda looking at something like that in the same way. Where she wanted to keep religion out of the school, he wants to keep politics out of the school, right? And a lot of people may have not agreed with what that lady wanted, which that wish was granted because after that, there was no more prayer in school. A lot of people may not have agreed with that, but you have to keep in mind that there are a lot of people that practice different religions and they don't want their children praying. There are a lot of people that are atheists and they don't want their kids praying. So I do feel like we have to respect those people's wishes, right? If that's something that you want personally for your child, school is, school is where they spend a third of their day. They still have, you know, time with you at home where you can instill these things in them. If it's something that you wanna talk about with your child personally, I think that that's something that you should do personally. But to say that every child has to go through this or every child has to learn. And, and, and we have to, we have to think for a second, we're talking about children. It's, the world is already confusing enough for them. Having to figure everything out at such a young age and, and make things make sense. I don't think it is appropriate to have children now be, I don't wanna say be burdened by it, but it is something else that's exactly-
I mean-
As something else added to their plate because, you know, they know boy and girl, that's it. They don't know he, she, them, her, they don't know, they know boy and girl, you know? And I feel like the, what I'm trying to say is I think we need to keep those political things out of the school. They're there to learn, teach them and send them home. Whatever you wanna do with your kids at home, do it with them at home.
Yeah, that's true. And Nick?
Um, I guess I'm kinda mixed with you guys. I'm not a hundred percent either way. I do understand it, um, a hundred percent I do get that, you know, certain things are politic. Certain things are, you know, you teach this at home and then that's it. But I think it kinda goes back to, we had a conversation earlier about, you know, uh, making people feel, you know, comfortable, right? So there's more and more people that are allowing their kids, young or not, to, you know, if they don't feel like, okay, well, I don't wanna be called a girl, I don't wanna be called a boy, right? Not saying that they're giving them, you know, estrogen shots or testosterone shots or anything like that. It's just, okay, I'll give you the freedom, if you don't wanna be called that, I'll call you, you know, whatever them, they, uh, whatever it was that they were speaking on in the clip. So it's kinda almost like how we went from, you know, everybody used to say, okay, retarded. Now we know like, okay, we really can't say that because that's a, a rude and cruel word. You get what I'm saying? So we were taught and untaught certain things, although it's a real word, it's in the dictionary and it's, it's, it's real for a lot of people. Um, same thing like with color, you know what I mean? Black people don't wanna be called colored. In our eyes, that's a racial slur. Or, you know, it, it, it brings you back to a certain place. Same thing like with midgets. Midgets don't wanna be called midgets. Midgets wanna be called little people. We had to stop using the word midget. So there are certain things that I think that people do try to teach people so it, so that way your kid don't have to go through all day in school feeling uncomfortable because somebody called, you know, whatever, a she or a him or whatever.
I think, you know, not to cut you, and I don't wanna cut you, but if, if, see, the thing is here, and I'm gonna be honest, okay? Cause let me just read something really quick, okay? I have the paper, cause I printed this out. So one, one comment that we had, um, with this. Someone said, listen, I am a school teacher too. I am, I am one. Um, just get that back, keep your opinion to yourself unless you have a stack of money. Don't involve yourself. Now I'm gonna say this, you see, this is what's going on guys, okay? Now I'm, I am an adult and I can, you know, I'm responsible for my actions and what I say. I know I'm coming on here and there's gonna be, a, a, a ton of people love what we say, a ton that's not, but I'm old enough to, to carry that weight. Now I'm gonna say this, cause this is what's going on. We're having this, um, like what this teacher said, this is a teacher that made this comment. You don't have an opinion because now they know that the teacher's right. I mean, not the teacher's right, the parents are right, the, the, the society is right. You don't wanna be kicked off something or you don't wanna have, you know, this. And honestly, only way you can really say something is if you have a certain platform and you don't want that, the LGBT community to kick you out and you're not be a part of what's going on. Because honestly, they're kinda like the number one powerful things right now because they was done so bad back in the day. Now I'm gonna say this, cause they were, they're, they're very powerful. And, and, and guess what? I love each and every last one of them as an adult. And I think what the man is saying is this, okay? If we continue to send kids into this world of, okay, listen, um, now you gotta learn this. You, we're not giving them a, a chance to learn what they wanna do.
But let, let, let me, let me cut you real quick.
Wait, I understand, but wait, no, 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 you, you're not gonna lose it, trust me. No, 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 you're not gonna lose it, cause I wanted to say this really quick. I just wanna say this. Now listen, we grew up, we knew the people that probably wanted to be away or maybe from the way they acted or whatever. What we're seeing is to have a whole, um, class on that and confuse kids. When I think, if they're gonna do that, I think it will be acceptable in high school. Your mind has matured much more. You see it, you can understand what people may want to do with their bodies. If, I'm saying on a mature level, because if that's the case, let's just change the can't drink to twenty-one. Let's let them drink at sixteen. And let's just keep changing it because you're gonna have different people saying, okay, whatever. This is not a, we hate this, this, this domination. No, we're not saying it, what they're saying is, listen, these are kids. Let's just teach them the boy and the girl first about your body. And as you grow, if you wanna change it, cause you do not like, that's your pers- that's your personal preference. If you do not like your body and not to mention, we're living in a different time. Everybody know, when you're going to school, I did went to my son's track field games where those boys are expressing themselves, the girls are expressing themselves. And guess what? Everybody's cool with it because that's the world we live in. But let's don't put this in elementary and middle school.
Okay, so look, let me, okay, so now that you said all of that, right? For one, we go back to the clip. This guy didn't say, okay, let's stop teaching about boy and girl. Let's stop teaching about this and that. What the clip said was, from the, the recording that the teacher played was, there are some people that may wanna be called they. This is may. They say they may wanna be called they and they want you to respect that. There's nothing wrong with respecting what people want to be called. And there's nothing wrong with teaching your kids respect early enough so they don't wait to high school. Because I've seen kids, cause you just now seeing about it, or people are free enough to live in their skin in high school or whatever it is, get bullied, get picked on or whatever it is because you're just not learning about it. So you're gonna pick on it because guess what? Everybody's not the same. One thing about high school, everybody gotta wear the same shoes, gotta look the same way. Of course, it's a little bit different now because the world is expanded much more. And I think that's what they're trying to get to because guess what? The earlier you to teach something to somebody, and of course, just like I just said earlier, the same way you don't have to teach your, if you wanna teach your children about, let's say, pronouns or they or whatever at home, it's the same way that you could teach your children about the same thing. Like, listen, you're a boy. You're a boy with, you know, uh, a penis, da-da-da, you're a boy. You're a girl, X, Y, Z, this, that and the third, right? You, the same way how you can teach your children because they're with you for the remainder of the day. They go to school, I think, in, in elementary school for about five or six hours a day. And that's not gonna be, I'm pretty sure, the, the whole point of the conversation. I think what people always miss, oh, why y'all putting that on kids? Like when people saying about having, um, same, um, sex, um, parents on cartoons. Are you trying to teach the kid to be gay? No, there's more children that have same-sex parents, so they wanna be inclusive. It's not about teaching kids to be a certain type of way.
That is different, cause even with the kids that has, even with parents that is the same sex, guess what? They still play a role for their kids.
Of course, but that's the thing, but people have an issue with it, that's the thing.
You don't care about that. The same is, okay, no, I'm saying, okay, people may have issue, but to show you that the common sense room of it, even though those same, same sex, those, those people still want their kids to ha- to know, listen, that, you know, maybe we choose this, but still, like, in front of you, maybe we, we show love differently, but I'm still like the dad, you're the mom or whatever, because we don't want to confuse them to not know. What I'm saying is this, this is what we're saying, listen. If your child, okay, wanna be called a they, or you want to be called Sally, you wanna be called Susan, whatever. To be honest with you, I don't know, but if I named you David and you say, no, I'm gonna change my name to, um, Danielle, listen, me being a parent, I'm not gonna let you change your name like that, but I'm cool with that. But listen, understand this. You have to understand, once you become an adult, meaning when you turn eighteen and you wanna be called Danielle, honey, you can be called Danielle because guess what? You can fight for yourself and I'm gonna always fight for you too. But honestly, even though they're having this stuff talked, that does not mean that these same dumb kids at school is going to respect that. You're still gonna get bullied if you don't know how to protect yourself from stuff. So why don't sit there and just allow that? No, listen, I'm so big on bullies, I'm, I'm, I'm big on, let's don't, let's don't do that. I don't, listen, once you turn eighteen or you, once you get to, I told my son, listen, you gonna have a heck of a good, you gonna have a good life, you hear me? Cause you're, you're able to do a lot of things and learn about some stuff. You're young, you're gonna learn, everybody's gonna learn.
And you know what I'm saying, I'm happy you brought that up because I feel like regardless of if, you know, say for instance, the kids are able to cross-dress in school and really be themselves and show who they really wanna be. I feel like the bullying will still happen because they're different. The same way they're bullied in school is the same way they're gonna be bullied outside of the school and in life, period. I feel like people, they bully or they, they, they do that to stuff that they don't understand. Unless you know somebody personally where you have a more one-on-one relationship with a person where you can really understand them and the stuff that they have to go to through. People don't care about that type of stuff. All they see is you're different. You can teach a child from there, two years old, you know, you don't wanna treat this person different. You don't wanna make them feel bad about who they are. You don't wanna be that bully, this, that and the third, and they can grow up and still be that person because they don't understand.
They got friends. I've had friends to talk about certain type of people. Back then, it wasn't nothing about, you know, gay and all this other kinda stuff. It was more so if the person maybe was poor or fat or, you know, they was dirty or something or whatever. And I'm, are, you know, they, they was mentally challenged and you have those set of friends that can laugh or they can do whatever, but guess what? I was always the type of friend, don't do that, that ain't cool. You still need to teach your kids, listen, let me tell you something. If I try to change you right now and try to let you, let the world be happy with something that they would never understand or want to even accept, they're just doing this because they know that this is a greater, a, a greater power, a greater cause. People feel different. You're gonna still get picked on, but you gotta be strong enough. You have to be strong and you have to carry that, like, listen, man, regardless of what you say. And I love the transgender men that can say, listen, I can be a transgender, but I still get up here and I reach up behind like a man. If that's what you want to resort it to, like, let's just do it like that. So in this thing, I'm not saying anything, but what I'm saying is with kids, because they, they, they are sponges. They don't sometimes know, like even down to the, the video games. You have so many kids trying to shoot and doing these things because every child that went in there and, and tried to shoot up the school started playing Call, Call of Duty. The game is for fun, playing Call of Duty.
Even too, I think a lot, a lot, and I'm just thinking about it, even much like, you know how they always have like a black kid and a white kid when they're young, they don't see color, right? They play with each other, it's no problem, right? And as they get older, even if the parents at home is not telling them, look, don't go over and play with that white boy. Look, don't go and play with that black boy. They can have parents that are completely neutral. Cause personally, I never knew anybody, black parents that told them not to play with anybody white, never. But as you get older, you gravitate more to what you can understand, what's familiar to you. Why is it that the older I got, the more I gravitated to more, towards the black kids? It was white kids in my class. But I gravitated to what, to what was, what I could identify with. And I think that's the same, that what, the point that I'm trying to get is, you can show a child something, but I feel like at the end of the day, people normally gravitate to what they know and what they understand.
And that's why they have the groups. At, at school, you have to got, and honestly, and I'm being honest, me being in middle school. Now I was always judged, but I was always judged in a good way because I always carried my, my head and myself a certain way. I went from always being Gothic, like, I love black and I love, and, and have that little Gothic look as a black chick. And I don't know how that became so popular, but I was black and it did. And then I had my thing, I thought I was a little thug, walking around with dickies and, and, and stuff. But guess what? Nobody can place nothing on me because at the end of the day, I knew where I was gonna stand up at. And I think that's what we need to tell our kids. If you decide to be something, you gotta talk. Like, listen, I don't care if I wanna be a woman or a, a boy.
And I think, now the point that they're trying to make, I feel like, okay, somebody wanna be called they.
If they wanna call, be called, if they wanna be called Sally, just call them Sally because they're having a difficult time with, they don't know what their, their body is at now.
They're gonna just say, look, call this per- this, this kid, this child wanna be-
But Nick, don't you think as a child for other kids, they'll be like, okay. So you wanna be called they, why do you wanna be called they so much? And you're just, you're, you're, everybody else, they call us boys and girls. Why you wanna be called they? Why are you a they? Or why are you saying you wanna be called this?
That might be hard, but I'm just, I'm pretty sure that-
I wanna put, but you know what?
I'm pretty sure the parents of these children, and more than likely they're rich kids, that are in this situation and they're able to do it like a Dwyane Wade, they got a hundred millions of dollars. And you have that freedom to be as creative as you want to or not want to. You could do whatever you wanna do when you have money.
How do you feel about that?
I feel fine with it. He, he, he made, he made the way for his kid to live the life that they want.
And so, and that's the reason why it doesn't matter. But now, but no, I'm saying that's the way, reason why, because of the money part, but let's take that same kid. That's not, guess what they did to, to the same kid that, that, that's like Dwyane Wade? That, no, I'm just saying, let's, let's, let's look at this really quick before, cause I wanna cut you, cause we finna be getting cut out.
I wanna say something real quick too, cause you've been-
Yeah, I know, but, but, you know? Cause it's a touching thing, but this is touching me. But I'm saying, you know what they did to the same child that, that wanted to have the polish, residence and do all that stuff? The same, but was in a school like how we went to, just a regular community school, beat the crap out of them.
Right, but that's the, you know why? Because you seeing something just now in high school, you seeing something just now in middle school. If you're taught something, okay, this is just, this is the way, why you gotta wait, wait? No, cause I'm trying to cut you off. Why do you have to wait until you in high school to understand certain thing? You, you definitely not gonna understand it then because your mind is starting to close up to what it is. I feel like the- But why not teach, why not teach these things? Like how you have a black history month, like how you have a something? I feel like the, the, maybe, maybe you, maybe you educate the kids more on the LGBT community.
Right, and that's all I'm saying.
Expose them to that, that's-
But look, but that's what I'm saying. But that's what I'm saying. And that's all that, the, the teeth, the, 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 the small clip that played before the teacher started talking was trying to say, look, there's some people that may wanna be called something different, let's think about it. Why should a child have to be beat up because they're wearing girl clothes or beat up because they're wearing boy clothes? I gotta feel uncomfortable because, okay, well, no, you're a girl, you're gonna wear a dress. Guess what? I, when I remember when I had to go to school and wear a dress, guess what I did all day? Nothing. I sat in the playground, I didn't move a muscle, cause I was so uncomfortable. I did not wanna be doing nothing. It's not that I had a problem wearing pants or, or a t-shirt or whatever it was, I hated dresses. So guess what? My mom put me on a dress, put me on some sandals or whatever it is for that school, and I was about six. I knew I did not like that. I knew it from then and I hated it. But guess what? When she put it, I, I didn't have, I didn't know to say anything because like, okay, well, I'm a girl, so this is what I have to wear. You get what I mean? But those days, I did nothing.
And even if you did what our mom, even if you did, it's something, you still was gonna probably just, you know, wear it up because I had to wear these earrings and none of that stuff I liked and you still had to- And guess what? But that's what, so play, even at the playground, I sat there and I did nothing. I might've played at the pla- at, at the sandbox. I used to love basketball a whole bunch, so guess what? Those days, I didn't even go play basketball. I didn't play hopscotch, I did nothing.
But you know, but you know, Nick, I, I, I also think, and guys, we're gonna end this, cause this is a serious topic, but I do think this, it doesn't matter how much we try to enforce different religions or different things on other people and, and make this whole world a better place and, and, and let everybody see stuff. At the end of the day, just like we have some straight people, and I, and I really do feel that this is the way that this is, you have some straight men that may hate the way, that may hate some gay men and their mindset, they see that, they want to attack. And the same thing with some women are even down to color. We have some, some people that, you know, pretend like, yeah, I'm okay with it, I'm just not gonna say. But maybe you go to work and they're, they treat you a little different. So you do feel like, oh God, maybe they could be racist because it's always on me that they're, they're doing a certain way, they're acting a certain way, who knows? The other thing, guys, that we're trying to say is, and it, and we all said it, and it, and it comes to a whole. Whatever you do, decide to teach your kids, I, me personally, my thought is that you just teach them, you know what, whatever you stand for, be strong enough to take it, especially when you want to be different. Because being different is, is a great, um, accomplishment and is something that you have to be strong. You cannot have that weak spirit, you cannot have a suicidal spirit, you cannot be fragile if you wanna be different. You cannot be fragile. Please teach your kids, listen, cause it don't matter what the school's coming in with. It's gonna be some, some dummy that wants to always challenge you for something. So that's the only thing I'm gonna say about that. So just teach them, be strong and whatever you feel. That's it.
I don't even know where to go with this one, I just feel like-
It was so touchy.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a very heavy topic. Um, I just feel like at the end of the day, I agree with what you say, Cynthia, whatever it is, I feel like we have to make our kids more mentally strong because, you know, although they may be calling, they may, they may be getting called the name that they wanna be called in school. When you go outside of school, it could be different and vice versa. I think we just have to, you know, build tougher kids. You know, I think we have to, I think with the suicides and the things like that, um, that will go down. But then again, you know, we need to teach our kids to, to be more respectful of others, to be more open-minded to people that are different because everybody's not gonna be like you and they don't have to suffer because they're not like you. You don't have to punish them because they're different. I think it, it works both ways. I feel like, you know, a lot of us, a lot of us-
Treat the people like they got a disease, just cause they, they're right there, they're not doing nothing to you.
Exactly, and I think a lot of parents build bullies unknowingly because they shelter their kids from, from so much. I feel like expose your kids to these things, see how they respond. And based off of how they respond, I think you can guide them to, to be fair, to be, to be nice, to be courteous, whatever it is, even if it's something that they don't agree with. I feel like keeping your kids in the closet is just creating monsters.
True.
That's all I have to say.
I agree with that.
And the only thing I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna just keep it, you know, um, pretty short. Um, I do agree that, um, there are certain things that kids do and don't need to learn, but with the way that the world is going, I do feel like you need to teach your kids as early as yesterday about everything that's going on because they're learning about this stuff earlier and earlier. It's not like back in the day when we was going to school and we didn't start to see same-sex couples until like, you know, high school, I, you, you didn't see it. So I think-
I didn't ever see that. Oh yeah, I did, I seen one.
Uh, exactly.
But when you seen them, you see how strong they was?
Right, and so that's the thing. And, and I feel like, just kinda like piggybacking off of what Jen was saying. You know, for one, I don't think anybody chooses, cause people throw that word around so much. Okay, if you choose to be trans or you choose to be gay, it's, it's not a choice. I don't feel like people, nobody don't choose to be that different. I don't think people choose a hard life on purpose. It's just like someone said, well, you choosing to be poor. You know, you don't choose it because it's a, it's a harder path. So I think to, to teach your children to be more respectful of people like Jen was saying that are different. You know, to also teach your children, if they are the different ones, do have tough skin because everybody's not gonna accept you, everybody's not gonna respect you the same way. I think to instill these things into your kids early, I do think that you would create a better life for both ends of the, of, of, of the spectrum. Because it's nobody's business all in all. If you decide you wanna be called Sally and you were named him, okay, Sally, whatever. And what, what this, it doesn't, I don't lose sleep about it. You know, like they say, what you eat don't make me go to the bathroom. If that's what you wanna be called, I respect that, that's your name, whatever. So that's my spill on it, then that's just it.
All right, you heard it from the C N J and, um, guys, please put your comments. And with this topic, let's, let it be respectful because at the end of the day, um, I, we're not gonna block you at all. I'm not gonna block you. Um, cause I want, I, I do wanna hear what some people have to say because this will to go up just to show different kids and different things. Like you still always have to be faced with someone like this. And even though we're saying, yes, you can do this. Are we, either, either way, we just care about the kids being safe and not having to be bullied or feeling confidence to understand. or feeling confidence to understand, okay, you know what? I'm a boy right now, but God knows, soon as I turn whatever age, I want to be different. I wanna be, however you wanna be. You be like T S Madison. She is, is A. She wants to be called a woman, but she still said, okay, I do have a man part. However, you just gotta be strong with it, people. Please, that's that's it. That that's the end of it. Okay, we're out.